Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order this May 2nd, 2024 regular board meeting of the School District of Haverford Township and to welcome those of you who have joined us here in the Oakmont Administration Building. The meeting is being broadcast live on our YouTube stream and will be recorded for later viewing. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in its foundation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I ask members of the board to please read the district's mission and goals.
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our environment is safe and nurturing; Excellence in education is a shared responsibility in partnership with all district and community members; Whole child development is vital to our education system; Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in areas of academic, technical, career, and social/emotional learning. Our decision-making process is student-centered and student voice is valued.
The 2020-2025 district goals include social/emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish; Prepare contemporary citizens to modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society; Diversity and inclusion; Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency. Thank you. And now I ask Mr. Testa, our Board Secretary, to please call the role.
Dr. King.
Here.
Dr. Larson.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Dr. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Dr. Shelton.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Here.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here. Dr. Larson had a work conflict this evening. I will next ask for a motion to approve the official minutes from April 18th, 2024's regular board meeting. Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next we'll do our report from our students, and tonight we have from Haverford High School, our student representative, Austin McConnell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to be back here tonight to recap the past few weeks at Haverford High School. It's been a busy and exciting time for our students across academics, athletics, and extracurricular activities as we wrap up this school year. Last Friday, we held our junior prom at the Drexel Brook, which was a memorable evening for our students. I attended this event, and my personal favorite part was the dancing, with the ice cream bar being a close second. On Tuesday, we hosted our junior college planning night to help guide our juniors in their future endeavors, providing essential information and resources to support their next steps in life. Coming up on May 10th, we have the senior prom at the Franklin Institute. Seniors are getting ready for a night to remember. Additionally, our graduation ceremony will be held on June 6th, at St. Joseph's University to celebrate and honor our outstanding seniors as they embark on their next chapter in life. Congratulations to Josh Krakow for being named to the All Delco High Q team at a ceremony at the Drexel Brook last Thursday, and to the High Q team for another outstanding season. The Esports team secured the fifth seed in playoffs with a 6-2 win-loss record, earning a bye in the first round and aiming for the state championship at Wilkes University. In athletics, softball ranks number two in District 1 with an impressive 14-2 record. Boys volleyball also ranks number two in District 1 and boasts a 13-1 record. Boys tennis celebrated their own victory against Upper Darby on senior night last week. Boys baseball is ranked 12th in the district with an 8-4 record, and pitcher Will Hoffman threw a perfect game against Harrington, a rare and historic feat for our school which hasn't been accomplished in the past 54 years of the program. Girls lacrosse excelled against Laur Marion, securing a 14-3 victory on Tuesday night and continue to prepare for senior night this upcoming Tuesday. Continuously, boys lacrosse secured a win against Laur Marion on their senior night with a close score of 7-6 placing them 25th in the region. Our boys and girls track teams participated in the Penn Relays, where the 1,500 team of Olivia Cisslack, Alyssa Bloxen, Colette Wagner, and Ava Kennavall, sorry, Kevan Naal, clinched first place in an outstanding display of teamwork and athleticism. The Haverford Township Education Foundation held its annual Twilight Run on April 27th. This event marked a run through the heart of Havertown and finished with a cornucopia of free and reduced-priced food and beverages from local restaurants, delis, dessert shops. This is a wonderful community event that supports educational grants and showcases the strength of our local Haver Town. On May 4th, Haverford Ice Hockey will host a quizo night from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Cheese Club, featuring a cash bar, snacks, and appetizers. The Robades Club is running a plant sale fundraiser at Tati's Greenhouse from May 3rd to May 5th. If you decide to go pick up some flowers, mention the club as you're checking out, and 10% of your purchase will be donated to the club. Finally, today marks 30 days left until the end of school, 30 school days left until the end of the school year. Wish it was 30 days. And AP testing is starting up next week, along with Keystone's following closely behind. So let's finish strong, and that was our week in review at Haverford High School. Thank you for your attention, and let's keep up the amazing work across all areas of our school district to continue the tradition of excellence.
Thank you so much. You're a tough act to follow, but the superintendent's report is next. Dr. Rishi.
Thank you, Ms. Wedeman, and I've learned to deliver my remarks at the end so we can keep the spirit of celebration going. With us this evening, Mr. Haran and staff from the middle school to share with us some highlights of the middle school emotional support program.
So, good evening and thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. I have an incredibly limited role tonight, so I'm excited about this. You're going to be excited about this student presentation. I'll tell you now that the presentation that you see, what's the PowerPoint and all the comments, is completely 100% created by the students in our emotional support program. So, thank you for your leadership and support. You will see how beneficial this program is to the students in our school. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our students, and they are going to present.
Hello, my name is Willow, and I've been in the emotional support program for two years since the beginning of 6th grade.
Hello, I'm Gisele, and I've been in the emotional support program for two months. The emotional support staff are Ms. Wagoness, which is an emotional support teacher, Ms. S., instructional aide, Mrs. Smith, emotional support teacher, and Ms. Instructional aide. Ms. G., Lakeside Therapeutic Counselor, Ms. School Counselor, and Ms. R., Board Certified Behavior Analysis.
Our emotional support rooms, students can access the emotional support classroom for a variety of needs, to learn social skills and coping skills, academic support, and FastPass access.
Academic and coping social skills support. Direct instructions in the area are executive functioning skills in how to organize materials and prioritize assignments, approach and break down tasks, advocate for support, persist with tasks when they are difficult. Direct instructions, skills, support in the areas of self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision skills.
So, the difference between Ms. G. and Ms. Mertens. Ms. G. provides scheduled counseling sessions, IEP-related service of therapeutic counseling, and she is a licensed mental health clinician. Ms. Mertens provides academic, social, and career counseling and school counseling services. Both of them are, I don't know, I'm sorry. Both of them have a FastPass, collaborative problem-solving, communicate, and they both communicate with outside supports and collaborate with the ES team.
Every month, Ms. B. sends out a newsletter to teachers in the building to let them know what we have been doing in class and what skills we have been working on. Pictures of students' work are included, and there is a section for quotes or testimonials from students saying what has helped them and/or shout any teachers who they have felt who they have felt have been supported and helpful to them in class.
Here we have some examples of student work. The one on the left is a kind of an outline of a house. It shows what things like fill the student's house, like friends, family, what support systems they have. There are two examples with, you can see large words in the middle. This, we had to pick a word for the fourth quarter and how we were going to fulfill this word, embody this word. There are some questions around the sides, we had to answer that. The one that says mirror and window identity activity, we had to draw two pictures, one how we think everybody else sees us and one how we see ourselves. Student testimonial by Judah Phillips. Hello, School Board, my name is Judah Phillips, and I was asked to write a letter to tell you about my experience in emotional support. Overall, my experience in the support class is very calm, nice, and chill. I get my work done, interact with my peers, and learn support skills such as the five pillars of resilience, social awareness, relationship skills, and more. In 6th grade, I didn't have support and my life was very rough. I struggled in the classroom even with my IEP and had difficulties with social interactions. At the start of 7th grade, the school reached out to my parents, asking if they think I should have a class called emotional support. At first, my parents and I were hesitant about me taking a support class, but we decided to try it out. I can truly say that it was the best schooling decision we ever made. In my opinion, the support class is one of the best things a student that is struggling can have to help them in HOMS, and they get a whole team of support. My support team consists of Ms. Mertens, Ms. Smith, Ms. G., and Ms. Wagoness, Ms. Sealy, and more. If there was any way to thank them more than I already have, I would do it in a heartbeat. Sincerely, Judah Phillips.
8th grade student says, thanks, Ms. K. Thanks, Ms. K., for being a great teacher. You are fun to be around but serious when necessary. You are good at keeping the class controlled. A 6th grade student says, emotional support has taught me to control my emotions, identify the feelings of myself and others, set goals, reflect on my actions, and transition into middle school. Another 6th grader says, academic support has given me an opportunity to catch up on my work and keep me more organized in my first year of middle school. An 8th grade student says, I want to share a quote I have created about what I have learned in Ms. B.'s room. Learning skills in this room will help the students who were once unable to cope or understand comfort.
So I know there might be a few questions, but I do want to underscore how incredible our staff is. I can't express enough to you how competent and committed they are to ensuring that every one of our students is supported and is successful, and a lot of that, you know, bubbles up to the support from Mrs. Battistelli, the school board, Dr. Rushi, there's a lot that comes into play at times when we're trying to develop programs and provide support to students. And this is just a brief testimonial of, you know, the outcomes of all the work that everyone's doing. So if there's any questions that you have for staff or students, we'll be happy to answer them.
I was going to see if the students would like to take the opportunity to introduce some of the other folks that are up there with them.
This is Judah here. He wrote the testimonial but didn't really want to present. He's here anyway. Ms. G. is down there on the corner. Ms. Smith is over there. I don't go to her room often. But Ms. Mertens and Ms. Wagoness.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. I'm curious, how many students are part of the program?
We have, oh, sorry. Currently, we have almost 70 students in the program between two classrooms. Last year, we had one, but the need, you know, we realized another classroom would be really beneficial, so this year we have two rooms, and it has just helped a lot having, you know, another teacher and two places for students to go in the building.
Great, thank you. And thank you to the students for presenting.
Yes.
I just want to say that the PowerPoint, when I opened, when I started previewing the meeting tonight, I was like, wow, this is a great PowerPoint. So, thank you for putting it together.
Super impressive, right? They're really good at Canva, that's what they do. They're really good at it.
I had a question about FastPass, which sounds like an amusement ride shortcut to something pretty great. Can you talk about a little bit more what FastPass is?
So, what the FastPass is, it's that teachers know which students are in the program, and if that student asks for a break, they can call Ms. Wagoness or Ms. Smith's room and make sure that it's okay for that student to go down there, then they just write a pass, and that student can take a break or work on anything they need to.
Great. All right, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He gave you the day.
Next up on our agenda, continuing with our festivities this evening, Dr. Mosser is here, principal at Manoa Elementary, to highlight this year's recipient of the Excellence in Teaching Award, one of our very own teachers, 2nd grade teachers at Manoa.
Hi, good evening. This is definitely a great highlight for me to introduce Mrs. Emily Gray, who's a 2nd grade teacher at Manoa, with the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union's 2024 Excellence in Teaching Award. So, as I sat here and thought about, what can I say about Mrs. Gray? Well, first, one word that comes to mind, she's magical. So, before I even talk about what she does in the classroom, I want to give you a little bit of a history about how Mrs. Gray came to Manoa. Well, she started in Haverford as an instructional assistant at Cooper Town. Then she moved out into learning support as an instructional assistant in Cooper Town. She then became a building sub at Manoa, or just in the, no, at Cooper Town, no, at the Manoa. Okay, sorry, I don't have my glasses, so I'm just like completely saying this off the memory. And then, within three weeks, I think to the end of the year, she was asked to, no, she was asked to become a sub. Yeah, and then she was hired as Manoa's teacher, that's how she got here. But I love how she actually walked through the reins of being a support for a teacher and for students, and then growing that support with special education, and then growing that into having her own classroom. Well, you also see that flourish in the type of teacher she is, because when I visit Mrs. Gray's room, she's outside high-fiving, giving fist bumps, whatever kind of greeting that child may need at that day, and then I hear her say, well, how was the dance recital? And how was the soccer game? And I'm like, wow, that's so nice, like she knows, she knows her students well. Well, then, as I'm standing there, there's another line of filing that is next to the students who are walking in the classroom, and these are her former students that just need to come over and give Mrs. Gray a fist bump or a high five, some sort of connection that she makes that makes her magical as kids continue to move through Manoa, they come back to see her. But it doesn't stop there, because outside, I see Mrs. Gray at a cheerleading competition with her daughter, or she's attending a baseball game to see a student, and now she's formulating that culture outside of her classroom. So when you walk into her room, you feel that nurture and caring and that sense of belonging that stands out, because she brings her family into their world as well as she brings them into hers. And it is such a delight, because when students feel safe, safety is first, and they then can feel like, okay, I trust Mrs. Gray, so that she's then using her skills and her strategies and her responsive classroom techniques to stretch their thinking so that it truly sticks. So that safe-stretch-stick is really what Mrs. Gray really shows. And just today, I was talking to a parent about a completely different topic, and he said, you know, Dr. Mosser, I just wanted to say that Mrs. Gray is an exceptional teacher. Not only does she like communicate with us, but she really gives us the insight of what's really happening in the classroom, and we really appreciate that. She is phenomenal. And I said, well, I'm going to speak about her this evening, so I'm going to make sure I share that. So it is with great honor that I present this certificate of excellence in teaching to Mrs. Emily Gray. Congratulations, Mrs. Gray.
One thing I'd like to speak about this evening, U.S. News &amp; World Report issued their high school rankings for 2024, and we experienced a drop in our ranking. Understanding and standing within, understanding our standing within the educational landscape is crucial for us to better serve our students, staff, and the community. By analyzing various metrics and feedback mechanisms, we aim to pinpoint strengths to celebrate and those areas where there is room for growth. Our goal is not to merely climb the ranks, but to ensure that every facet of our educational environment nurtures the holistic development and success of our students. Our commitment to providing the highest-quality education necessitates a critical evaluation of our performance metrics. Rather than seeking excuses, we view this process as an opportunity to identify areas where we can enhance our practices. With that being said, in 2023, the district was in the top 5% of Pennsylvania high schools included in these rankings. In 2024, the district is in the top 7% of Pennsylvania high schools included in these rankings. In our preliminary analysis, we have uncovered valuable insights that inform our beginning understanding of our school's performance thus far, and we believe that it is helpful to note, the 2024 rankings, although they are titled 2024, are based on the 21-22 school year scores. The number of students taking an AP exam, along with the number of passing tests, represents 30% of that score. 12th graders in 2022 were among the group who took fewer AP assessments. 12th graders in 2022 were among the group who took fewer AP assessments than the prior year. Many neighboring districts do not have science scores included in this ranking because of waivers that occurred in the 21, 22 school year. Many of our neighboring districts are experiencing a drop in their rankings as well. The report itself states, even very small movements in a school's data can result in changes to its overall score, which can result in increases or decreases in its overall numerical ranking by many places. As we look at the time from 21, 22 to present day, we have 59 more students taking AP exams, with 193 more AP tests taken since that time. And we've experienced an increase of 10 percentage points of total AP students with scores of three or higher. So we are hopeful to see some types of improvements in those areas. I do believe that it is vitally important that we maintain perspective as we review rankings such as these. Our educators are committed to providing rigorous and engaging instruction that challenges and inspires students to reach their full academic potential. Whether it's through differentiated instruction, personalized learning plans, or innovative teaching strategies, our teachers strive to create an environment where every single student can excel. Our teachers take the time to build meaningful relationships with students, providing mentorship, guidance, and support when needed. They create safe and inclusive spaces where students feel valued, respected, and empowered to be their best selves in academic achievement and a whole approach to whole student learning. We will continue to look at these data sets, always to identify areas in which we can experience some improvement. I think a nice follow-up to that. We are very pleased to announce that Mr. Leon Smith, a social studies teacher in our high school, has been named a finalist for the esteemed 2025 Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year Award. There have been 12 finalists identified across the entire state of Pennsylvania. So we're waiting to hear the results of that. Some public service announcements that we usually make. Dance the Night Away at Haverford Middle School, the social for older adults. It's a '70s theme. Please enjoy the evening with dancing and mingling tomorrow evening from 5 until 7:30. Our secondary art show will be held in Jim D. at Haverford Middle School. And that show showcases artists from grades 6 through 12, and it runs May 7 through May 9 from 6 until 8 p.m. Our Second Annual Ford's Career Networking Event will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Haverford Middle School. The main goal of this event is to establish strong relationships with diverse candidates who are seeking employment opportunities within our district. And congratulations to our board member, Ms. Lee. The Delco Right to Education Local Task Force had their Making a Difference Awards Ceremony Tuesday evening, and it was wonderful to see so many of our students as recipients, staff members as well. And we will be recognizing them at our May 16th board meeting. Thank you.
The next section of our agenda is a time for public comment pertaining to items on tonight's agenda, and we had no one sign up. Is there anybody who wishes to speak at this time? We'll move on to board reports. For the Delaware County Community College, we have Latonya King.
Thank you, Ms. Wedeman. So I'm just going to share an overview of the budget related to the Delaware County Community College that was reviewed last week. So a few highlights of the 2024, 2025 budget. The budget is balanced at 92.7 million, which represents a 2.3 overall change in the fiscal years. Enrollment is projected to increase by 1% in the next year. Some highlights related to revenue. Looking at the Pennsylvania student tuition and fees, there's an increase in tuition by $1 per credit hour, an increase in fees by $2. With the revenue plan, with sponsoring school districts, contributing a 1% increase related to the sponsor appropriation. I'll talk about that a little bit more as we go ahead. Expenses include the change for operating expenses for the next year is approximately 1.1%. Other expenditures can be contributed to the increase due to the roofing project that is scheduled to take place over the coming summer. And the debt service payments pertaining to the new southeast campus, where there's going to be construction taking place there as well. As a part of the presentation, it talks about the sponsor appropriation for the 2024, 2025 year. And so the college conservatively requested just a 1% increase for those districts that are sponsoring, to the Delaware County Community College, excuse me. Overall, the sponsor appropriations accounts for 9.53% of the revenue budget. The allocation from each sponsoring school district accounts for a portion of the college's operating capital, lease, and debt costs. The presentation did provide a listing of all the sponsoring school districts and what those appropriations look like. I'm just going to speak for a moment about Haverford's. And so, the numbers are small. I have to increase my font a little bit. And so, Haverford's total sponsor appropriation is $1,420,586. And so what are the things that you think about in terms of the benefits of having a sponsor agreement with the Delaware County Community College? One of the biggest benefits is that sponsoring school district is, the residents of that school district, they can attend at the lowest tuition rate, which is $136 per credit hour. And non-sponsoring school districts actually pay double that amount. And so a benefit of our school district being a sponsor of the DCC is that our students and our really our community have an opportunity to attend the community college for a lower tuition rate as compared to non-residents. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. The DCIU, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, report is next. And Kristin Larson is our representative there, and she will provide a report at the next meeting. Delaware County Legislative Council, Ken McKay.
There's no report.
The Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Dave Schwartz.
Just want to mention that Virtual Advocacy Day is coming up on May, yeah, I think it's on May 7. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, I take that back. Virtual Advocacy Day is coming up on May 17 at 1 o'clock with several senators from Delaware County. Interested? Let me know. I can pass on information.
Thank you. Anything from the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting?
No report. Next meeting is on May 9.
Next week. Yep. Anything from the Curriculum and Pupils Services, Latonya King?
No report. The next committee meeting is after the Finance and Facilities meeting.
Thank you. The Policy Committee, Antoinette Stockrass.
I do have a report. The Policy Committee met last week, and as usual, we had a very busy and packed meeting, which I've just been signed out of my notes, but that's great. The policies that we reviewed were Policy 712 for environmental sustainability, along with an administrative regulation. And that one had previously gone through, or it was the first time coming to the committee, and it would be a new policy. But a couple of our board members had put it together separately and brought it to the committee for review. There was a very good, robust discussion on the environmental sustainability policy, and I believe that we'll be able to move that one for a first reading for next week. Just give me a second. I'm having technical difficulties here. Okay. The next policy we discussed was Policy 626 for federal fiscal compliance. And we discussed it in tandem with Policy 626.1, travel reimbursement for federal programs. 626 was an existing policy that was recently updated, but it had attachments. And so we are going to make those attachments into administrative regulations. And in fact, the proposed Policy 626.1 is also going to be included as an administrative regulation. So we're going to see how that looks, and that one will either be up for a first read next time or maybe after that, depending on how quickly the ARs can get put together. The next one we talked about was Policy 605, tax levy. We had reviewed this one at the committee level before, and we didn't need to make any additional changes or not substantive changes, so we're moving that one forward. We should see that one in front of the board next time. Policy 606 was discussed for tax collection. That was also being reviewed at the committee level for a second time. This one did have some revisions to it, but I don't recall whether they were substantive revisions, but that one was a very good discussion. Policy 607 was next up for tuition income, that the board also discussed several revisions to, and this one the board wanted to bring back to the committee. So we won't see that one at our next general board meeting. That one will go back to the committee, which I think the next committee meeting will be in June. Next up is Policy 608 for bank accounts. This one only had slight revisions, so there were a couple of things here and there, but the Policy Committee suggested it for a first reading, so we should see that at the next board meeting. Policy 621, local taxpayer bill of rights, and that one also had an administrative regulation to it. This one did have some discussion and revisions to it, but ultimately, the board did decide to move that one forward for a first reading as well. So we'll see that one at a future board meeting. And finally, Policy 622 for capital assets and GASB statement 34, as well as the administrative regulation that goes on with that. That one is, would be a new policy. It's recommended by PSBA, and it actually is mostly based on law. So there was not really much movement that could be done by the committee, but we reviewed it and are moving that one forward as well. We only missed out on one policy that was on our agenda that we weren't able to discuss within the two hours that we allotted for our Policy Committee, but we'll bring that one back next time as well as new ones. On the agenda tonight for voting are also some policies to be repealed due to the Policy Committee's work of consolidation. So we'll see these later today, or later in this meeting. And it says specifically, and I'm happy to speak to it at the time, but for each one, which policy, the substantive portions of these old policies can be found. So that'll be Policy 404, employment of professional employees, Policy 504, employment of classified employees, Policy 603, budget preparation, Policy 604, budget hearing, and Policy 610.1, exclusive contracting by district. That's all right.
Thank you. For the Board President's report, we like to highlight the additional work and time that board members spend engaging in roles and functions in the community and within our schools. And we have a couple of events to highlight tonight. Chris Shelton attended Chatham's PTO meeting the other night.
Yes. So last night, it was the Meeting of Chatham Park Home and School Association. And Ken Matthews from CBD went over the renovations that were going to be performed at Chatham Park. There was quite a good attendance. Representing the district was Dr. Roushi and Dr. Whitehead, the principal. And Ms. Wedeman and I were also there as board members. So I'm not going to go through the renovation plans. Ken presented what had been presented to the board before. And parents asked questions, expressed some concerns. One question was whether the renovations would accommodate full-day kindergarten, which they will. There are also questions around how to handle air quality during the renovations, sound management of the playground spaces. And Ken was able to answer those questions for the parents. And then, you know, brought up, Dr. Whitehead emphasized that there would be, you know, regular communication of what's going on with the renovation. I believe there will actually be a time-lapse camera that's going to be set up so people can watch the construction. Some of the things that were unrelated to, concerns that came up unrelated to the construction was the traffic routing around Chatham Park, which I think we've discussed before, you know, people who, whose students are in that catchment. And also questions about, you know, how class sizes were going to be managed. The horrible buildings will be taken away after the renovations, so those will be eliminated. But the school will essentially almost be 30 to 50% have larger square footage, if I have that number right. I may have it slightly off, but there's going to be more room, so the classes will be accommodated. And finally, just a question about cafeteria food, so. So it was a productive evening, and yeah. That's my report.
Thank you. And then Latonya Lee would like to report on the Making a Difference Awards.
The 12th Annual Making a Difference Awards were held on April 30 at Springfield High School. The Making a Difference Awards celebrate students who demonstrate inclusion, who overcome challenges, and professionals who make extraordinary efforts to increase acceptance. On behalf of the local task force and as a Haverford parent, I would like to thank the Haverford School Board and the Haverford School District for their support. The Making a Difference Awards were actually started by a Haverford parent who is now a Special Olympics swim coach, who would literally kill me if I gave her name. But I'm grateful for her vision 12 years ago out of Haverford School District that allows every school district in Delaware County to celebrate diversity and inclusion. This is a very forward-thinking way for us to get our mission across. I would like to thank the board specifically for listening to me drone on about these awards ad nauseam and for acknowledging the winners of the awards at a board meeting. That's a wonderful thing. I would like to thank Dr. Roushi, Nicole Battistelli, Natalia Adalizzi, Mr. Haran, and everyone else who showed up that I didn't get a chance to see because it was standing room only. I would like to just give two shout-outs. One to Haverford senior Ava Miller, who has a beautiful mind and a beautiful singing voice, and committed to Mullenberg and will be studying mathematics. And so that's the kind of talent that is pushing inclusion in Haverford. And I would also like to shout out Noah Riley and Liam Riley of the middle school and of Manoa Elementary, only because after their nomination, a parent came up to me and said, are you telling me my kid could ask for swings and there could be swings? And all I could do was laugh and say, I've seen these swings. They're amazing. It did work. I now vow to not talk about these awards from June until January. We start planning next week, so you will have to give me through May. And finally, thank you to Ms. Wedeman for not only showing up for the awards, but really listening to a whole lot about these awards in the last week or so and still coming to see what it was about. That is much appreciated, and I definitely wanted to acknowledge it. So thank you, everyone.
You sold it as a feel-good event, and it was indeed that. And congratulations to the local task force for putting it on and gathering all of the really, truly inspirational inclusion work that is happening around Delaware County and giving it the attention and appreciation that it deserves. Next, Antoinette Stockrass would like to talk about the Twilight Run.
Yes. So the Haverford Township School District Education Foundation held their annual Twilight Run this past Saturday. It was this past Saturday, right? It felt like a really long time ago now, but I guess it's been a long week. And so the Education Foundation is an independent organization whose mission is to support the school district and enhance the district's curriculum and extracurricular activities. And if you talk to teachers or students or PTOs, you know, people have been really touched by the Education Foundation, and so we're really lucky to have them in our community. They do this annual event every year where there is a 5K race for those so inclined and a one-mile fun run for the elementary students and their moms who get dragged along. And so I was able to attend. I was one of the parents doing the mile run. Run is a very generous term for what my daughter and I did there, but it's not a generous term for what President Wedeman did, who I would like to just shout out here, got 47th overall in the 5K, 10th in her gender, with a time of overall in the 5K, tenth in her gender, with a time of twenty-five or twenty-four minutes and forty-five seconds in this 5K. So very impressive, I think. And also equally impressive, Chris Shelton helped with corralling everyone, which was really great. It was actually really fun to walk up to the event and see Chris there, helping everyone with his, you know, smiling face. And so I know that was really great, too. And so I just want to say thank you to the Education Foundation for putting on this event and for being that supportive community organization.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for not saying the age group that I was.
She did come first in that, though.
The next section of the agenda is for finance and facilities, and item A is the bill list. I will accept a motion to approve dispersments for payment totaling nine hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Shultz moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is for the Delaware County Community College twenty twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget. I will welcome a motion to approve the DCCC general operating budget and adopt the resolution for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five in the amount of ninety-two million, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars, of which Haverford share is one million, four hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars.
Stodgrass moved.
King second.
What, I'm sorry, I'll repeat that. Haverford share is one million, four hundred twenty thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars.
Still moved.
Phil second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Dr. King for her report that she gave earlier to give us some more information on the DCC's budget. And I know we hear frequently from Dr. King the really great things that the DCC is doing for Haverford students as well as our community. So thank you for, you know, researching that and reporting out to us.
Glad to be a part. Thank you.
When I looked at the budget, I did have some questions on how it was presented and would welcome a time when Delaware County Community College come in and present to us. They have done that in the past, particularly recently around their building project, but to be able to explain the, their, a little bit of the budgeting methodology. I think you highlighted one of the advantages we get as a sponsoring district, but to kind of put more context to that. And I was a little curious about looking at their last year's budget estimates for this year and why they leaned so much on the prior budget figures and not the year-to-date kind of estimates coming in and saw that it looked like they're projecting a loss for this year and just trying to figure out how that might roll forward with future forecasting. But like I said, I appreciate the important role they provide in giving access to college courses for our high school students who have the opportunity to take some of those credits and the opportunity for members throughout Haverford Township to access those classes that can help them advance in their careers or find a new interest to develop and skills to grow. So we'd welcome a chance to hear more from them. Any other comments or discussions about the Delaware County Community College General Operating Budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, it is a roll call. I saw that on the resolution and meant to, I have it written right here, roll call.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Larson? Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Dr. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Stodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of the agenda is the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five proposed final general budget for Haverford Township. I would welcome a motion to adopt the proposed final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five totaling one hundred fifty-four million, five hundred sixteen dollars, sixteen thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars. The proposed millage rate eighteen point eight nine five one, an increase of zero point seven two six seven mils or four percent over the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four millage rate of eighteen point one six eight four.
Shultz moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It's important to point out that the increase of four percent is significantly less than the Act One index. Act One index is the maximum amount that we are allowed to raise taxes based on a, on a state formula. We have been below that now for the past couple of years, I believe. And also, you know, one highlight from the budget presentation I think is important is that our non-discretionary spending, our spending, our spending that we have to spend, salaries, pensions, you know, those types that, you know, certain equipment, those types of things are ninety-six point seven percent of our budget. Our discretionary spending is just over three percent. So I mean, the district, I think, utilizes, you know, utilizes this money, I think, very, very well and keeps our taxes, you know, at a, at a, you know, at a lower increase than, than, you know, these discretionary times, I think, is pretty impressive. So I think it's important to point out before we, for anybody who missed that presentation.
I just want to say we've had two presentations so far on this preliminary budget. The first was at our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, and then it was at the general board meeting of our, the last meeting in April. And I believe we'll see it again. So, you know, this is an ongoing process. This is our, our proposed final budget for now, but our, we actually finalized the budget in June. And so just to refresh me on the process, at this point, it then gets published and then there are further comments and then it comes back to the board. Is that right, Mr. Testa?
So we, by P D guidelines in Act One, we have to physically make this available to the public so it is up for public inspection, they can review it. It will be on our website, so within a day following tonight's meeting, when it's approved, it'll be out there. We anticipate adoption, the final adoption date is June thirteenth. So prior to that, ten days prior to that, it will be in that place. Just letting the public know that the final budget will be in that form. And it can change from what we approved tonight until that point. This is just kind of a placeholder where we expect the budget to be.
Thank you. And when you say it could change, what would be some of the reasons? Is that based on comments from the public or new information that you get from different vendors or sources?
Right. If we get new information from the state, it's highly unlikely that they would approve a budget required because it hasn't been historically that way. But if there was a new funding stream that we were guaranteed at that point, certainly that could play a vital part of the question.
Okay.
I guess I had a question and a comment. I've been kind of mulling over this since the last board meeting. I know, obviously, I mean, I have the notes written down, but Mr. Schwartz just said that ninety-seven percent of our budget is non-discretionary and we have a three percent discretionary. And yes, we did come in under the Act One index and we're with the four percent tax increase, but that's real money and, you know, not just, I'm talking, not just talking seniors or people on fixed incomes, but to every family that I know of in this township that's, you know, it's a lot of money. Things are tightening up for everybody and, you know, a four percent tax increase is going to affect a lot of families. I asked the ques, so my question is, I asked a variation of it last time. I asked last time, what has the district wanted that wasn't included in this budget due to cost concerns? And you explained, you answered that. But I guess I'm going to flip it a little bit. Did you try to actually slap, to not give a tax, did you, not what did you want that you didn't put in? But was there an effort to try not to make an increase? I mean, some things I know we can't control. We have the ninety-seven percent non-discretionary. But was there any effort, a cost cutting made?
So all of the department heads were given the opportunity to look at their budgets and be, you know, asked to be conservative in what they requested for the following, for the next fiscal year. So in doing so, that was as close as they could get to still being able to operate efficiently.
Okay. And I guess my comment, and, you know, how much confidence do we have, like recently and, you know, at the, I have it here, at the, how much confidence do we have in these numbers? Because at the May twenty-first board meeting as a board, we all approved, we closed out a lot of student activity accounts and one big clubs that weren't in existence. And one big thing that we did there, we approved a transfer of a little over twenty-one thousand dollars that was in an account for the Haverford High School track boosters. And because most of the sports all have booster clubs, the track was one of the exceptions, and now they were doing that. And I've been in contact and I know I've written to Dr. Rucci and Board Administration that come to find out, well, we made a lot of mistakes, there's only forty-eight dollars in the account. And these parents, these, the track parents have been working on this and I'm getting constant updates. You know, for instance, they just found a four thousand dollar error that, that a business office, they took money away from a track that wasn't their expense and they just, the business office admits, and now they just found today a four thousand dollar error from an invitational, the girls' track that was put to girls' tennis. And so I have a lot of trouble, like, you know, we've approved some numbers that don't come to be true and, you know, I don't, I mean, it's a comment, you don't have to answer this, Mr. Testa, but I just don't, even just this little slice of knowledge I have, it doesn't give me a lot of confidence in how things are being handled. You know, it's something that the board actually all approved, the transfer of this funds, every one of us, and it hasn't even been amended. And now we transferred funds that apparently don't exist, but now we have parents on track boosters who have full-time jobs and childcare issues, working around the clock, going back through receipts, finding errors that our business office is making. So just, it's just a comment, no need to respond, just gives me a lot of pause. That's all. Thank you.
I will follow up on, on one aspect of that, and it was in the presentation, Mr. Testa, about a four percent tax increase for the average property owner in the township. I recall it's approximately two hundred and fifty dollars. Is that correct?
And one example, Ms. Vitale, when you asked, you know, what were the things that were reduced in some way? We were scheduled, over the last couple of years, we have replaced vehicles in our maintenance department. So we were scheduled to do additional three in the year coming up, and they're going to wait, they're going on hold. So there have been things like that through each department when Mr. Testa indicated budget managers prepared their budgets, but then they met with those of us at Oakmont, and there were things, some things that were removed or put on hold.
Could I ask about an example from earlier in tonight's meeting, the emotional support staff at the middle school? Is it correct that some of those supports and services were previously provided by government funds? And did we, did we get COVID dollars or any of that? Did that support emotional support?
That was the interventionists at the elementary level that were S R funds. Those funds are, some of those are through mental health grants that we do get. That may be what, what you're thinking. And that's continuing those mental health grants.
I guess I was thinking of ways in which, because of funding that we had gotten during COVID and seeing the value of some of those interventions and supports that we have incorporated staff positions or contracts to continue those, even though those dollars have been discontinued. So we'll have other opportunities to continue to review the budget, refine it perhaps, get public comment on it at committee meetings, at school board meetings. And this is a step in a process that's outlined by the state to get to a final approved budget in June, whether or not the state of Pennsylvania approves their budget in a similar timeframe.
So this is just your proposed final, and then June we'll see your final final, basically.
All right. So the motion is to adopt the proposed final budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section seven of our agenda is for human resources. Item A is retirements and resignations. I will accept a motion to accept the following retirements and resignations as listed.
Vitale moved.
King second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just again, a whole bunch of people who've been with us for a long time. I mean, even including nine years up through twenty-four year, twenty-seven years. So thank you for your service.
Would you like to highlight or acknowledge some of these folks? Do you want to share?
Just, no.
Okay. We will have opportunities to celebrate retirees.
At the June meeting.
But if we can acknowledge, I would definitely love to celebrate Mary Henigan, my personal favorite, got me through high school. But all of the, the wonderful.
Yes. Thank you. All right. So to accept the retirements and resignations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is for appointments. I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act one sixty-eight of twenty fourteen.
Shelton moved.
King second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is for leaves of absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave requests.
King moved.
Stodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is for an employee's passing. Regret to inform you, the following death as listed. Take a moment to, moment of silence for Jane Bullinger. Thank you. Item eight of our agenda is for people services. Item A is an educational services agreement. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service agreement for a district student. This agreement covers reimbursement for the privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
King moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section, or item B is out of district educational services contract. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational agreements for students attending out of district placement as listed.
Stodgrass moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
There were just two documents in the, I couldn't see a difference. I just, or at least in my, what I'm looking at, board docs?
They're red, they're redacted from the student's name.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section nine of our agenda is for curriculum and instruction. Item A is an MOU affiliation agreement. I will accept a motion to approve the agreement with Kutztown University of Pennsylvania in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars to use Haverford Township School District as a placement site for three graduate students in, as literacy interns for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Shultz moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is an affiliation that we've had for several years now, right?
Yes, we're excited to welcome back a reading specialist from Kutztown. We help them to earn their certification and they help us by working with small groups of students both during the school year and over the summer. They also very helpfully serve as substitutes on the days that they are not doing their internship. So it really is a mutually beneficial relationship and we've had lots of success with this program.
And are they across our elementary schools?
Yes, they are placed in three of our elementary schools. We've had varying numbers of students across the years, but this year there will be three.
Any other comments or discussion?
We do love a reading specialist, especially three, that will work under these arrangements. So this is amazing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section ten of our agenda is for policy matters. Item A is to repeal policy four oh Item A is to repeal Policy 404. I will accept a motion to approve repealing Policy 404, employment of professional employees.
Shelton moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yep. This is one of the policies that was an information item at the policy committee. And the district is asking to repeal Policy 404 because it was combined substantively with Policy 504 and Policy 303 to include the different employee categories and create the updated Policy 303, employment of district staff. That policy was adopted, that policy as amended, was adopted on February 1st, 2024. So this policy is now not needed.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is repeal Policy 504. I will accept a motion to approve repealing Policy 504, employment of classified employees.
King moved.
Shelton.
Go ahead.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Me again. Yeah, this is the same one I just mentioned before, was also combined into Policy 303, which is now an act of policy. So this policy is no longer needed.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is repeal of Policy 603. I will accept a motion to approve repealing Policy 603, budget preparation.
Shelton moved. Words second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Policy 603 was combined with Policy 604 and Policy 602. And now Policy 602, which is our current policy as amended, is budget planning practices and procedures. That policy was adopted at the March 7th regular board meeting. And so all of the budget information from budget preparation is now included in the other act of policy. Therefore, Policy 603 is no longer needed.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is repeal Policy 604. I will accept a motion to approve repealing Policy 604, budget hearing.
Shelton moved.
King second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Along with Policy 603 that we just approved a repeal of, Policy 604 for budget hearing was also combined into the current, Policy 602, budget planning practices and procedures.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section of 11 of our agendas for other items. And item A is school board treasurer. I will accept a motion to reappoint Tricia McCunney as school board treasurer to serve a one-year term effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
King moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I will ask Mr. Testa, who's our business administrator, what is the difference? Because people could benefit from knowing just the school board treasurer. What is that role and function?
So it's required by school code. So it's an annual appointment that's done every year. So, you know, the school code has not been written in some time now. So it's kind of an antiquated role. Traditionally would have been a position where that person would take care of the deposits. They would take care of the financials for the district. Now that really is not the role anymore in some cases. It's a board member, depending on the class of the district, or it's an employee of the district that kind of basically has access to the financial information. So they serve in that capacity. So not a decision-making process, more of just an informational access.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is to appoint stock and leader attorneys at law to serve as special counsel, people services. I will accept a motion to appoint stock and leader attorneys at law to serve as special counsel, people services.
Shelton moved. Words second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section 12 of our agenda is for public comment on other items. We had four people sign up. The board values public comment as an essential component of school governance that adds information for the deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before the board. It is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. And our board meetings are an opportunity for us all to model good government for the engaged citizenship for our students. Our public comment is divided into two sections. There was an earlier time for matters on action items on tonight's agenda. The agenda is published on the school district website under school board and under board docs. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. In order to give everyone an equal opportunity to speak, and per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming your residency in Haverford Township. If you have materials to distribute, please leave them at the end of the board table. Your name and your topic, and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes, and your presentation is part of our broadcast and recording. If appropriate, an administrator or I will follow up with speakers to discuss or respond to issues raised. Our speaker is Todd Hall.
Good evening, Todd Hall. I reside in Haverford Township. First of all, thank you, Dr. Ruscian, for responding to my question I asked earlier this week on the U.S. News and World Report ranking. Second, I asked the board to consider passing a resolution in support of proposed legislation that has a connection to this school district. Senator Kristin Phillips has introduced the bill in the state senate that would require the Pennsylvania School Board Association, the PSBA, to comply with the right to know law. The PSBA is primarily funded by taxpayer dollars. In interactions I've had with the board in the past, I've been advised of their persistent guidance from the PSBA. The PSBA is often discussed at these meetings. It's clear that they are a de facto governing body to this board. They should be subject to the same right to know laws as other entities. They're using public dollars, working with this public entity and other school districts, so they're essentially a public agency. My second point is that district goals are up for review and re-establishment in 2025, and they need to change. The SMART goals method is often used to frame goals. Components include making goals measurable and making them relevant. And the current goals are not measurable. How are we measuring, or how can you measure that someone is emotionally flourishing? How are we measuring socio-cultural proficiency? The current goals also are not relevant. This is a school under the jurisdiction of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. The mission of the Pennsylvania Department of Education is to ensure that every learner has access to a world-class education system that academically prepares children and adults to succeed as productive citizens. Quite a disconnect there. I was advised by the former board president that themes of goals are on a rotation, and I don't find this to be an acceptable response. It's just puzzling why academic education is not mentioned in any of the district goals. Thank you.
The next speaker is Danielle Vitale.
Hello, my name is Danielle Vitale, and I reside in the district. I spoke at the last school board meeting about troublesome changes that have occurred in our district in the years between when my oldest sons attended, who are now a junior and a freshman in high school, and what I'm experiencing now with my youngest, who is in fourth grade. I mentioned that back in 2014, we were the eighth-ranked school district in the state. And since then, the new rankings have come out, and we are now 49th in the state. So in 2014, we went from the eighth-ranked school district, and in 10 short years, we've plummeted to 49th. I think administration needs to take accountability, and I feel like I heard a whole lot of excuses earlier. You know, the rankings aren't the end-all and be-all, and of course they're not when you're not doing great. We need to address the gross overuse of technology at our elementary level. Our youngest learners are on their Chromebooks a ridiculous amount of the time throughout the day. Ask teachers, ask aides. Studies show this is not the best way for them to be learning. We have an elementary math program that was rushed in right before the COVID hybrid year, where approximately half of a one-hour daily math class is completed on Chromebooks. Our little guys are getting about half a class with teacher instruction. Top-performing private schools are doing math mostly paper and pencil. We're not teaching study skills. We've continued post-COVID practice at the middle school of unlimited test-taking attempts in science class. I don't know what that teaches children. It actually teaches them nothing. Our administrators aren't focused on why we were 92% proficient in, or advanced in math in 2024 versus, Manoa fifth graders last year were 41.1% proficient or advanced. And these are the numbers that actually matter more than the rankings. Instead, we have administrators emailing out-of-state companies looking for validation to replace classic literature against teacher recommendation. And worse yet, the books you replace classics, like To Kill a Mockingbird, are not as substantive, per our teachers. They're not, they don't provoke the type of conversations and discussions that they want to have that help children learn, and they're not as beloved. That flies in the face of what our administrators tell us here versus what the teachers are actually saying. There's a lack of accountability and expectation in our elementary schools. We've stripped away homework and parental involvement post-COVID in elementary schools. And even with the no homework policy, not everyone's getting it. And if you don't do it, there's no repercussions. Pre-COVID, with my older sons, if you didn't do your homework, you missed recess. All of these changes have snowballed and resulting in our ratings freefall. Administrators need to have education as their priority, not politics or an agenda. And I learned the hard way in October 2022 that academics aren't always the top priority of district administrators, not teachers. When my then-third grader struggled in math, I had to petition Dr. Nesbit to let him bring home his math homework book. My son's wonderful teacher wasn't allowed to send home his homework book with her student, a book that my tax dollars paid for and sat unused on a shelf in his classroom. Any administrator focused on education would want a child to succeed, would have sent the books home with all the students, but at the very least, immediately when a parent asked. This was sadly not the case. We need administrators that are focused on education, and if not, they need to find employment elsewhere. Thank you.
Victoria Brown?
Good evening. My name is Victoria Brown, and I live and pay taxes in the township. I want to thank you for the solid evidence you offered at the last board meeting to explain why you voted 7 to 1 to oppose adding a third voucher program to the existing two programs currently funded by taxpayer dollars. That is to say, why you oppose adding another $100 million to the $470 million in tax money already allocated to Pennsylvania vouchers. Your discussion inspired me to find out more about Pennsylvania's existing voucher system, and I learned a couple of things that support your opposition to the use of public money for private school tuition. First, regarding the claim that vouchers helped struggling families to escape failed public schools. Vouchers are capped at $9,000. The average voucher is about $2,000. The average cost of private school tuition in Philadelphia is $36,000 for grades 1 through 4, $43,000 for grades 5 through 8. Struggling families cannot make up the huge gap between vouchers and tuition, and it's not struggling families who are benefiting from this government subsidy. A family can qualify for a voucher with an income as high as $147,000 when medium household income in the state is $73,000. It is families with more means who are getting my tax dollars to continue sending their kids to the private schools that many of those kids were attending already. This third voucher program does not change that basic math. The second truly stunning thing I learned is that Pennsylvania private schools are not required to administer any achievement tests to their students and not required to report students' achievement progress to parents or taxpayers. If you are a person who relies on achievement scores to assess the quality of education in a school, you definitely do not want to be putting taxpayer dollars into private schools where zero achievement accountability is required, zero. We know zip about how students are faring academically in those tax-subsidized private schools. We can't possibly know what private schools are high performing. So the historic moment here, when the Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruled that education funding must be distributed more equitably, the state senate is trying to kneecap that redistribution by siphoning off another $100 million to private schools where zero testing or accountability is required. So thanks for protecting my tax dollars by opposing this truly cringe-worthy elitist scheme.
Thank you. The next speaker is Helene Conroy Smith.
Good evening. I'm Helene Conroy Smith. I live here in the township. I'm coming tonight because I have some concerns based upon what's out there now. And I heard Dr. Ruscian, I was on my way over here, talk about Haverford's ranking. It's not the be-all and end-all, and we're still at 7%. That's not okay with me. Since we want to place items in percent, let's talk about money. Let's talk about in the past 10 years, our taxes have risen 38.914%. In 2014, we were eighth. So let me just talk about this. In the educational realm, people really don't understand outside of what goes on. And packaged programs are sent and asked districts to purchase. And I want to just say, back in 2014, 1314, our budget was $83,688,204. In 2014, 2015, our taxes went up to pay for a budget that's $87,662, I'm sorry, $600,623. Now, you're proposing a budget that I heard of $154 million. I mean, you're talking about 38.914%. You're saying it's only $250. It's only 4%. It's less than the Pennsylvania requirement. It's not. Okay? It's our money. It's my money. It's my home. 49th, 49th ranking, our values of our homes are going to go down because people aren't going to want to come to Haverford Township and buy in Haverford Township. Values start to go down. And I am saying to you, let's look at what we're purchasing. Let's look at what we're doing. I see that we're going to hire another principal in the middle school next year. That's projected. Do we really need that at this time? Is our, do we have such an increase in students that we need it? I don't think that we do. But I don't make that decision. You just spend my money. And that's what I have a real problem with. Because my money is just being siphoned off.